I'm going to get my gun, my gun, and my gun, let me, my mother. And, uh, brother, good night, date you off tonight, then come up and see if I can light up the offense on, and just get ready to adjust, you know, and try to pressure rush it, so I'm going to take a lot for you, cheers for the last one.
I forgot, they all have to go through customs.
Yeah.
They're hard-ruled.
Self-remunerated by the hospital.
At least they're safe. They've ordered eight.
Oh, so they're home today?
Yeah, they have to, they have brunch for the princesses in the morning, and then the rehearsal, and then you learn more, I plan.
Twenty, twenty up Friday, yeah.
My thirty-two-year-old daughter is apparently always dreamed of a Disney wedding. Friday, nine AM, dry, no alcohol.
That doesn't sound like very much fun.
So much fun.
Yeah, not.
Why's that?
I don't know, this is her thing, I mean, she's thirty-two.
I don't, I don't drink, I had an open bar.
Move forward with the continued hearing of case three dash twenty-five, Jason Cook, Somewhere Else Tavern. All right, you want to present?
Sure.
Just your name again, just for the record.
My name is Joe DeNubio, DeNubio Consulting LLC, here on behalf of Somewhere Else Tavern Inc. for For an application for a temporary tent. Yeah, so, so as a follow-up to the last hearing, there were some comments from residents regarding the volume of live entertainment in the tent. So, you know, we listened to those comments, and we came up with some ideas of how to manage the volume a little better. Provided a volume management plan that you have before you. We also met with a resident, and, or the applicant met with a resident, just to go over what we had proposed. And from my understanding, and, you know, Mr. Lee can comment later after this. It seemed like the meeting went well, and the accommodations that we were making were, seemed to be acceptable. Do you want me to highlight these revisions?
Excuse me, Joe, while you have that up there, why don't we show the board and Dave where, how we're gonna change the positioning of the bar and the stage?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna zoom into the.
Do I need to re- All right, do I need to repeat that record? Um, for the, for the record here, folks, one of our amendments are going to be changing the positioning of the bar and the stage. What we're pretty much gonna do is flip-flop that, and put the stage up at the front where the bar is located now. And so the noise will be directed more towards the back of the property into the woods instead of where it was last year. It would have been more directed towards David Lee's house. So hopefully that would make a big difference, and the back of the building should absorb some of the sound. Uh, we have some soundproof blanketing that we're going to try. We tried that years ago. It seemed to work. Uh, when we had a smaller problem with the neighbor, and that seemed, that solved our problem for the time being. Other than that, David came over to Somewhere Else Tavern the other night. I feel as though we had a productive meeting and a friendly meeting. Um, he and I discussed some things, and, um, you know, ended up chatting like two regular guys. So I'm hopeful, hopeful that what we discussed and what we're presenting here tonight would allow us to move to the next step in getting a permit for this seasonal tent that we would like to do. It's very important to our financial state at Somewhere Else Tavern, and a lot of fun had by all. We haven't had any problems. It's a fun thing. It's seven to ten at night, and we're looking forward to a fun season. So hopefully, all that will be taken under consideration.
Can I, can I add just one more of the measures that we had outlined in the volume management plan? So I, I did research the town's bylaws for any decibel levels for noise. I didn't find anything. So what I did, I researched some other communities. The nearest community that was similar to Pembroke, that had a level for decibels, was Bridgewater. So, um, we, we use what they had as a standard in their bylaws. Um, and just to point out, only maybe, what are they, like three hundred-plus communities in Massachusetts? Probably maybe twenty-five to thirty had actual metrics to measure that. Um, so we proposed that their metric that they use to be what we would use. And we're also proposing that at the beginning of each performance, we would monitor that, and we'd monitor it every half hour during the performance. Just to make sure that we're within that decibel level, complying with it. We've also suggested as well that if Mr. Lee would like us to monitor it on his property, we would be absolutely willing to do that. But I think it's safe to say that if we're complying at the location of the Somewhere Else Tavern, seven hundred feet away, it's not gonna be as loud, so that was an additional measure that we're proposing.
And we do have a professional meter, decibel meter, that I have access to. A friend of mine is a retired supervisor from a big company in Boston. It's gonna allow us to use this instrument in hopefully keeping a handle on the, the noise volume. Feel strong that we can really put a handle on this, and it's, you know, gonna come to, hey, you guys turn the music down, please. It's a little too loud. So, um, this should be hopefully easy, and see if we can be good neighbors, and provide to everybody, so.
And I, I'd just like to make one more comment, just the location where we're relocating that stage. The projection of the volume, I'm, I'm gonna pull up this Google aerial image of the location of the tent in previous years. So, so basically, the projection of that volume is gonna go, if you follow the arrow, back to the woods. So it's, it's, it's away from every commercial and residential property, so I think that's gonna help manage things as well.
There was one letter of support here from Seventy School Street, out of the record. I'm not gonna read it, but I do, I assume the other members did too. Okay. Um, all right, is anyone else here? Yeah, just, just name and address.
Um, yep, David Lee, Lansing, Missouri. I'm just the person who mentioned at the last meeting about the, the concern about the noise. So as Mr. Cook said, I met with him last Wednesday night. He, he retracted his opinion of my music taste initially, which was one of my main objectives for the evening. Um, and Mr. DiNubio has just forestalled one of my comments that the, about the diagram as submitted hasn't changed. So now that you've described how you're actually gonna change it on the, on the diagram, then that's fine. Um, and yeah, I'm happy that with the discussions with Mr. Cook and from the documentation provided by, by Mr. DiNubio that, that they're addressing my concerns, our concerns. Uh, and that going forward, hopefully, you know, we'll have a more peaceful evenings here on Fridays and Saturdays in our neighborhood. One, one thing that you mentioned, the, the supporting letter, and one, I read, read through that. And one thing that, that gives me some hope and confidence is that I think they're, given their location, they were, if you like, behind the speakers as they were last year, and they stated that they weren't experiencing any noise issues. So if we're gonna be behind the speakers and behind the building going forward, then, then that should hopefully address, address the issue. But as Mr. Cook said, we now have a line of communication. I've got his business card, and if there's any, any issues, I can call him, and we can, we can sort it out over the phone. So hopefully that will sort everything out.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, did anyone else have any comment in the? Sure, just say, just your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lily Cristello. I also live at Seventy School Street. Um, I've lived there now across from the tavern for about twelve years now, and I've been able to see firsthand the positive impact that Lori and Jason have brought to that area since their ownership takeover. Um, and for as long as I've known them, they've always been people who take care of their community, whether it's catering at a local event or hosting a fundraiser outside or inside for a local high school sports teams, things like that. And living across the street, we can hear the music. Obviously, we're right there. But I can say when I'm in my house, I can never make out what the words are. I can hear some. And as a nurse, I work weekend shifts, and never once has the music deterred me from being able to fall asleep on a Friday or Saturday night to waken up early and going to work. Um, and I can see the tavern from my bedroom window. And the last few years, having the tent has given the town a place to go for good food and listen to music outside without having to go all the way down to Plymouth in the summer to get an atmosphere like that. And I think just not allowing the chance for the tent to take place would just be unfair to the community as the tent at Somewhere Else Tavern has become a place people look forward to gathering under the tent in the summer and just listening to some music. Um, but yeah. And then there was another neighbor who just sent an email that wasn't able to make it. So I don't know if I'm able to read on behalf of them, or if it would be like in account as well.
It was in favor?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, no, that's, it's in favor, yeah. You can, you could forward it along to.
Okay, yeah, they did send it. They just weren't able to make it tonight.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mari, and I also live at Seventy School Street. I feel like we kinda have a resolution, but also just in for the music. I think it's completely fine. We live across the street. We, my husband's a trooper, and he works crazy hours, so he has a crazy sleep schedule. It never affects him. Um, I'm also pregnant, and if I thought that that was gonna wake the baby up at night, I'd be like, this is not gonna work. So, um, but I have never had an issue, even like outside. I, I kinda enjoy sitting outside and hearing some music on Friday or Saturday. But, um, I think seems to be going well, so, um, but definitely in for the tent and the music. And I think, like I said, from my house directly across the street where I can see the tent, it's completely fine, so.
Oh, great, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, anyone else in the, no? Um, okay. Do you just wanna address just the, the standard for the, the variance? The, there's just a standard under the bylaw for the variance?
Yeah, uh, let me just.
Yeah.
I know last time you read it very well, so I said that was, I thought that was sufficient, but if we need to.
Yeah, if you just touch on the.
Yeah, so, so back to the, I'm just gonna pull, pull this over. Just a review here. So right in the center here, where this part of the plan is showing the offsets, uh, front, rear, and side. The location of the tent is compliance, in compliance with the rear offset, this side offset, as well as the front offset. We are asking for a variance for this offset right here. The zoning bylaws require twenty feet. Um, the tent will be located approximately five feet from the property line.
Is that the property line that juts out and then back?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, so a lot of it will actually be a lot closer, or it would be a lot further on that side.
Right, just, just.
But when you're showing an offset, you're required to show the minimum. So there is a point that there is a lot more buffer there for the vast majority of the tent. It's just the front corner, which is.
So it's just that small corner of the front, otherwise.
Otherwise, it probably is pretty close to twenty feet.
Right, I see, okay.
Um.
So that is a weird shape.
Yeah, definitely is. What, I mean, that, all the lots in that area around the lake, they're all just kinda interesting, but they're the least.
Yeah, it's a whole jumble of different types.
Probably nobody really knows where the property lines are either, but I will say the record plans for this, there are some monuments in the adjacent properties, so.
Okay.
They are pretty clearly defined. Across the street, it gets a little hairy.
Yeah.
Uh, so the section of the bylaw that we're requesting a variance for is Section four point three point D point one for use and dimensional regulations for Business District A, which refers to Section four point one D dot three in Residential District A.
Okay. Okay, so you'd be relying on that kinda odd shape and that, for that corner where you need that five feet, where you only have the five feet. Okay, all right. And it's, I think with your parking, presumably, it's really no other good place to put it.
Uh, yeah, I, with, just the, the flow of traffic, I don't think you can move it anywhere closer to the center of the parking area. If you put it on the other side of the parking area, you still have, you'd, you'd be abutting the other property line, so you need a variance. And there are, there are also some operational issues where, you know, if you move it, you know, it's convenient for servers to come out the door and bring their food and what have you, so that's, there, there is an aspect of operations that makes that a more ideal location.
And we can add to that too, Joe, the fire department, you know, requires that I put the Jersey barriers all the way around that tent. So if we moved it more into the parking lot, it's gonna move the barriers more into the center of the parking lot. And that would, that would, could cause a flow of traffic problem.
Okay.
It's really the only place we could put it, and we've never had any issues with it being there. Um, Jim Shea's always been very workable with me from the fire department. Uh, we put, we added Jersey barriers. We have them almost within three feet all the way around the tent, even in the back where you can't even really, there's no way anybody could run into it, but we put it, we put, Joe's got them marked out. Those are all the Jersey barriers all the way around. So they actually come up probably at least, but they're two feet wide, so there's probably two, probably four feet from the edge of that tent. So it's, we really wouldn't wanna put it anymore into the center of the parking lot itself. It would just, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work.
Okay, and I assume we really can't go back more towards the rear a little lot?
Then you'd get into the gravel, and I'd be afraid somebody might twist and anchor. We spent a lot of money paving that parking lot in hopes to keeping everything on the pavement for, you know, when it rains really hard, we've got the water flowing correctly. I've got a storage trailer back there where we keep extra furniture and equipment for the restaurant and whatnot. So we'd have to do some changing around, but it's, as Joe had mentioned, it makes it a little bit easier for our service to come out of the building and get into the tent. Not to repeat myself, but it has worked smoothly, the flow of the working people and the traffic for the last four years, so this'll be our fifth year, so.
Okay.
We'd like to continue with the where, where it is. It seems to work nicely.
Okay. Chris, you have anything?
No, excuse me, no, I don't disagree, 'cause if you pushed it, if you pushed it farther down the back or up toward the top of the screen, you could get the parking lot kinda bottlenecked, so you get into a safety issue where people come and go, and then it's also a safety issue because the waitress is gonna walk farther with food, beer, dishes, whatever. It is an odd, just an odd shape, the entire lot.
It is, yeah.
Okay, um, what was, I mean.
You know, I've been here several times, and sitting there, picking up, it just is the best you can do with that lot. You know, living over there, virtually every lot is, you know, a hundred years old, and they're all, all like that. It's the best you can do.
Yeah, there are, there's a variety of odd shaped lots.
Yeah.
Um, okay, the, so it's Friday, Saturday, seven to ten?
Correct.
Would be the, is that just, is that like when it's operating, seven to ten?
Well, people will get, you know, we open up probably at five o'clock. The, the staff will come in and start getting the tent ready.
Right.
You know, stocking beer and food and whatnot, and people show up early. If it's a beautiful night, they're gonna, they're gonna come in early and get their spots, so.
But the mute, the music, seven to ten?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I think we could, and then you listed, you provided on the volume and management plan those one, numbers one, two, and three. On that submission, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, that page two, okay. Um, all right, um, is there anything else you guys wanna add, or before we close, and?
I think, I think we're good unless you gentlemen have any other questions. I, I think we've covered our, best of our knowledge, best of our.
I mean, what I'm thinking is, and the board's gonna, we can, we'll discuss it, is conditioning it on these two-three sound conditions that you presented.
And I think that was our intent.
Yeah, it's what it looked like.
Of course, yeah.
Obviously, the, the music would just be from seven to ten. I'm not gonna get into the business. It's how well the business operates. That's, um, but the music would be seven, Friday, Saturday, seven to ten. Um, and then it would, just that it would have to be, you gotta go in front of these boards anyway, but it would have to be subject to getting the, um, the outside entertainment license, I think, from the select board, and then.
Okay.
Also, assuming you have to go through a planning board for, you know, fire department might be involved, and so.
It's next Monday night, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be, I'd say, I'm leaning towards. Yeah, so it'll be, I'd say, I'm leaning towards allowing it just subject to those conditions.
Thank you.
That's my thought. We can, we'll, we'll close, we'll have to deliberate, but, you know, so the, I don't know necessarily the variance, it would probably make sense to go through that process first if, if this is how we vote, let that, let those boards know we got the variance, subject to obviously your conditions and these approvals that we got to get to.
Of course.
Because I don't see the point of the variance if you can't have the outside entertainment, if that's how it goes with the other boards, so. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to address that before we close.
Well, we all have our reasons, we all have outside, just time you and...
Hmm, probably not, no. I mean, I...
Okay. So no more comments or questions on this? Okay, I'd just like to let you know what the conditions that I'm thinking of, in case you wanted to address them. Do you guys have any other conditions you might want to...
Besides the sound, I mean...
I think that's fair.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
We're good, gentlemen?
We'll make them, yeah, real quick, Mr. Lee, sure.
Just before I leave, thanks for coming in for a special meeting tonight, gentlemen. I really appreciate it.
No, yeah, of course, I'm happy to help.
Very good. I, I appreciate your, you know, trying to work with the positioning of the tent and everything, I just want to remind you that part of the noise mitigation policy that, that Joe submitted was founded on the tent being up, you know, up against the building and not down the end of the driveway, which would, or parking lot, which would make it harder for them to, to apply that, that noise reduction policy.
Yeah, the, we're going to go off of this plan. It's the plan you submitted, that's where the location is.
And you know, if you want it to be put in the conditions that we revise, is it okay if I...
Yeah, yeah, come on, yeah.
I should speak in the microphone anyway, but let me just piano over here. So you could put in the conditions that, that I would provide an updated plan that shows, you know, the stage over here and the bar over there? If that makes sense to you?
Yeah.
I guess we didn't want to update it until we had the conversations.
Yeah, so you're going to have to...
But I'd be more than happy to resubmit it with a revision date with those changes.
Yeah.
That way you have it on record is that's what we're...
Yeah, we're going to, we'll go off, I mean, you did put it in the conditions that you're going to relocate the stage. You did, it's in writing here, but yeah, we'd ask you to submit an updated plan. So we can, we can just add that.
Yeah.
Updated plan based on your condition one to relocate the stage and bar. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, I don't, make a motion to close and go into deliberation?
Yes.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I mean, I think where it's just that's, you got an odd shaped lot, there's really no other way, place to put it. It's, it's, and it's really just that corner of that lot that comes into play on that tent and I think due to the shape, it might be the, I don't know, you can really put it anywhere else. You know, you know, financially or otherwise, I think it could be a hardship, so. I would, I'd be in favor of allowing it subject to the three conditions that they provided on the volume management plan from April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, along with an updated plan based on condition one to relocate the stage in the bar in such a way to redirect the volume towards the rear of the property. Also that it's subject to the planning board's approval for the site and the selectmen's approval for the... Must be an amendment to the liquor license and for outdoor, and for outdoor entertainment, right? Okay, okay, so... Okay, so I'd make a motion to allow the application for Somewhere Else Tavern, sixty-five School Street, for the requested variance, subject to the three conditions on page two of the volume management plan submitted by the applicant April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Also, based on the first condition on that, on said plan, an updated plan be submitted showing the relocation of the stage in the bar. The stage being directed towards the rear of the property, so the music would play to the rear of the property. And also subject to town, the planning board's approval and the approval of the select board to amend the liquor license and allow the outdoor entertainment.
Did that cover it?
Was it? Yeah.
So you got that? Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, and just, this note too, I think they, they do meet that standard for variance as presented by their representative, so. Okay, we got a second, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, guys, we're all set.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys, good luck. Good luck.
We have minutes, too?
Yeah, we got, is it just at one page or minutes?
I think we got one.
Um, do you have the minutes? Do you want to, do you want to make a...
Which one is this? This is from March seventeenth?
It says March seventeenth. Uh, yeah, we just...
Yeah, but there's still recording, we have all the matters. Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Anyway, echoing your comments, what I saw in the last hour, yeah, I agree with it. It's insanity.
Is this, is that?
That's it, yeah.
All right, just make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. You got a second? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think, see, that's it, right? All right. We're all set. Meeting adjourned.